Welcome to the Holbrook Planning Board meeting of May 1st, 2017. On the agenda here is the continuation of the public hearing by the Planning Board to discuss and public input on the status and redraft in the town zoning bylaws which are expected to be considered at the town meeting on May 10th, 2017. So, again, we're here to continue the hearing. And any comments here from the board? And with that being said, I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to Attorney Mark Brokowski. Excuse me, I always mess it up, I believe.
Put me alone, Tim.
So, Mark, if you want to just kind of go over again.
Okay.
Some of the changes here in this draft.
I see some familiar faces in the audience, and I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly, some new faces as well. We re-advertized and started the process again because after the first public hearing, a few things changed, and it was necessary to re-advertize to capture those in the four corners of the document. So if you watched the other show that we had a couple of weeks ago, the major reasons we re-advertized are, one, there's now a recreational marijuana moratorium, new section 7.3. That moratorium takes the town till end of 2018, roughly 18 months out, to waiting to see what the Attorney General and the Cannabis Control Commission will do with recreational marijuana, and then make a decision about what we should do based upon how that all turns out. There is no allowance for recreational marijuana in town now. There is a medical marijuana overlay district, but there's a moratorium on recreational marijuana till December of 2018. The second principal change was that we changed the site plan proposal. Some who felt that we should have a minor site plan for small projects that still could cause some trouble, so I added that section in. And then the other major change was on senior housing developments, we consolidated that and made it easier to work with. But it's too different than it was before, and so we needed to re-advertize that. So if you've already watched the earlier public hearing and you want to know why we're doing this again, those are the three reasons. Now, for those of you who want to go through this document with me, I'm going to do it very quickly, and I'll ask you to stop and ask me for questions if you have any. I'm going to do this section by section. The first thing you'll notice is that there's a wonderful new table of contents. It goes eight or 10 pages in, and I think it gives everybody a really good feel for where the material is housed in the new bylaw. Should be easy for people to find stuff now. Section 1 is the announcement of purposes and authority. It's really just sort of stock and trade template material. Obviously, the bylaw controls land uses. There are other regulations and bylaws in town. Board of Health has bylaws and regulations. Conservation Commission, this does not supersede any of that. If there are multiple regulations, you have to follow multiple paths and get different permits. So that's pretty much what this is spelling out in section 1. It also describes how to amend the bylaw, and it has a statement of purpose and authority. Section 2 is districts. I think most importantly, it's what we did not do that's just as important as what we did. The only overlay, the only districts that were eliminated were a couple of overlay districts. There was an overlay district for, I'm trying to remember the old name of it. In any event, it was not really an overlay district, so I made it, when I come to that section, I'll point it out again. I made it into a special permit. Medical marijuana overlay district was not identified on any map, but it is, in fact, exactly the same as the adult entertainment overlay district, so we added a location for that. And other than that, we didn't change any boundary lines. We're talking about doing that in the fall, but, for example, there's talk of moving the town center overlay district down to, what's the name of that business center? Yep. And we may or may not do that. There's also talk of expanding or shrinking the lot sizes in some of the residential districts, but we did not make those changes. So these are the districts we came in with, and these are the districts we're going out with. Section 3 regulates uses. I certainly modernized the use table to a very great degree. Here's the major changes to the use table. First, the Board of Appeals was the special permit granting authority. After some discussion between members of the ZBA and members of the Planning Board, the Planning Board is now the special permit granting authority. So virtually all uses that require a special permit will go now to the Planning Board rather than to the Board of Appeals. And the members of both boards seem quite content to allow that to happen. I always scour the religious uses, educational uses, agricultural uses that are protected by our state law, because the bylaw that I look at usually doesn't have it right. So I went back through all that, and I fixed it. I would add childcare centers to that as well. And then we took some time to walk through each line item in the use table because some of it just didn't make any sense. You'd have a use allowed in a business district, and a very similar use was not allowed. So when we looked at the land use impacts of those uses, we consolidated several uses and made them alike rather than different. There was no reason to make them different. The section that we did change, I think, most is home occupations. You're allowed to have a business at your home. About 65% of Americans do. We went to a very simple system so that the building commissioner can have an easy time of it. If there's a client, a pupil, a customer, or an employee who comes to your home to work, you need a special permit. If not, you're free to have that business as of right without a special permit. It's not that you can't do it, it's just that your neighbors should probably be given a little notice, get to come to a meeting, talk about some conditions that you might want to put in place, because an adult, a home occupation will change the character of a neighborhood. It'll put cars on the street if there are people coming to the home for business purposes that aren't there if it's just a house. So that's probably the biggest change we made there. Section 4 is use, I'm sorry, dimensional regulations, and the table that you see on 4.1.2 is the table that you have today. We did not change lot sizes, frontage setback, building height, or anything of the sort. Those are exactly what you have today. There's some talk about reviewing that for the fall, but mostly with regard to lot sizes in some of the residential districts. You have a 60,000 square foot district, Res 1. There was some thought that that was too big, a required minimum lot size, but we did not change that in this draft. If that's going to change, it will be discussion for a fall town meeting. Section 5 is non-conforming uses and structures. This is totally rewritten, and it's one of the major changes. Tried to make it easier for homeowners. Homeowners enjoy special privilege under the state law. The state law says that as long as you don't increase the non-conforming nature of your house, then you are entitled to a special permit to go forward. So we tried to carve out or spell out situations in which it's extremely unlikely that there would be such an increase in the non-conforming nature. For example, if your lot's on a, if your lot is deficient in size, and it has a house on it, and the addition on the house, the alteration to the house, will conform with zoning, front yard, side yard, rear yard, building height, then that's not going to increase the non-conforming nature of the structure, so there's no need for a special permit hearing. A building permit can be issued instead. And we had two other situations like that that we carved out, which will make it easier for a homeowner to just go see the building commissioner, show the alterations that are proposed for the single-family home, and not have to bother with going to the Board of Appeals, which would otherwise be responsible for issuing a special permit here. This is a system I've put in place in 50 other towns, and it's, I've never had a complaint. It works really well. The Supreme Judicial Court had a couple of cases five, seven years ago. It fits in nicely with the case law. And that's probably where the vast majority of private citizens, not business people, but private citizens, will bump up against this bylaw, because as your lot sizes increased, as your frontage increased over the years, you made more and more of these lots non-conforming, so that probably at this point in time, half of the lots in Holbrook are non-conforming. Now you can add a dormer, you can do a knockout, you can put a top floor on a ranch, pretty much easily without having to go through a tortuous process. Section 6 is general regulations. Tried to lump these all together in the same place. So signs, off-street parking, loading, and what we're calling performance standards are now grouped together here. These are rules that are primarily addressed at businesses, because businesses have signs, and they also require parking. Didn't change your parking schedules, so that if you have a certain number of square feet, you need a certain number of parking spaces. What I did with the committee approving is indicate that if you could get by with less parking, and no one wants to see asphalt where you don't need it, then you could simply ask for a special permit. So if the bylaw formula says you need 60 parking spaces, but you know you're going to be able to get by with 40, instead of having to build out 60 and stripe them and maintain them forever, you come in and you ask the Planning Board for relief. And normally, that would take a variance, but a variance is too harsh a remedy here. This is just a question of whether or not it's going to be good or bad, and that's a special permit. Same thing with signs. If you're playing by the rules, the sign might be too small. Your building could be set back a distance from the roadway. So why not allow for a bigger sign, but let's make it by special permit so that you can tailor the relief to the individual circumstances. Otherwise, you'd need a variance. Variances are very difficult to get. Variance is predicated upon soil conditions, shape, or topography of the lot. I need a bigger sign because my lot has soil conditions? That doesn't make any sense. I need a bigger sign, and it won't hurt anybody? That makes a lot of sense. So that's a special permit. That's the difference between a variance and a special permit. The performance standards run the table from lighting, noise, landscaping and screening, stormwater management, site development standards, traffic, building aesthetics, utilities, and fiscal impact. None of this was in the bylaw before, but it makes sense. As Holbrook grows, you want to have these things in place. They're administered by the Planning Board in the process of issuing the special permit or site plan approval, sometimes both, and it helps things to fit into the community. The thinking here is that the businesses will be developed in such a way that you'll begin to see some consistent character, health and public health and safety will be served, and if the standards are a little bit too strong, there is a waiver provision that allows the Planning Board to issue a waiver for the applicant. Section 7 is special regulations. You don't have a whole lot. You had a pre-existing regulation for motels. I kept it. You had a pre-existing regulation for communication towers and wireless communication facilities. I kept it. And the only one that I added was the temporary moratorium, as I said, on marijuana establishments, and that's going to carry you until December 31st, 2018. Section 8 is special residential regulations, and here there's a couple of changes. The first one is flexible development. Conventional subdivision eats up all the land and carves it up, and people build houses on the lots that result. But it doesn't really promote open space, and it doesn't promote alternative kinds of design. So there are towns that have used flexible development, which is a zero-lot-line approach, to invite developers to come up with a market-driven idea that might work better. Local examples would be Cannon Forge in Foxborough, which you can Google. It's a wonderful project with a few hundred units. It's got singles, duplexes, and triplexes. Got a community center, it's got a pool, it has a nice buffer around it so that people who live in conventional subdivisions don't have to look directly onto something different. And it's all done by special permit through the Planning Board. So if somebody thinks that they can market something with that type of construction, single, two-family, three-family, multifamily residential structures, not more than that, they're free to come to the Planning Board and to ask. I think if you look at something like Cannon Forge online, a lot of towns would call this cluster development, but this isn't, this is more flexible than that. Cluster development usually wants a lot of open space, 50% open space in some cases. This, the minimum price of a ticket is 20% open space. If you want to give us more, God bless, we'll be happy to take it, but you don't have to give us more. That open space has to be usable, it can't be wet, or the majority of it can't be wet. And so we're inviting the development community to really get a landscape architect, that's what it all boils down to, and do something right. Try to develop the land that's left in the best possible design. And again, if it's not going to work, the Planning Board has the power to review this and say no to the special permit. I did this down the road in Dayton, maybe 10 or 15 years ago, and the first applicant who came through didn't get it, and they said no. And he came back, and he built a golf course under this. It really came out much better the second time around. So hopefully you'll have good luck like they did.
What other towns have that?
Flexible development?
Yeah.
Well, I think the town I've worked with the most that's had the most success with it is Groton. Groton has not had a conventional subdivision since the early 1990s. They've all been flexible developments. And not every developer gives you, you know, a cluster with a lot of open space. They might just shorten up the road and shorten up the frontage and do all single-family homes. So whereas under conventional, they might have needed 1,600 feet of road, maybe they do 1,000, and the houses are tighter together. But you get the open space resulting from that. It's a trade. He gets shortened road costs, infrastructure costs. You get some open space to look at. He is building it because he thinks he can market it, and you have to agree. That's the way it plays out. There's a lot of towns that have done it. Amherst does a lot of it.
Can you go over if there's a certain amount of land, you can only put so many houses that the town allows unless there's a special request by giving something to get an extra lot? So if there's like lot size only allows 10 houses, the cluster can still only put 10 houses. It doesn't, the number of houses in that area will not change unless there's a given and take in the process.
Right. So the steps in doing a flexible development are pretty straightforward. The developer does what's called a yield plan, and that yield plan is exactly what he could have built if he'd built a conventional subdivision. Has to show you that he complied with Board of Health regulations for septic systems, with subdivision regulations for length of dead-end road. Let's just hypothetically say you're in agreement that he can build 10. So that's his number. That's his basic number. He can build, if you want, I think we added something in that 10% of the units had to be affordable, and we add those on. Too steep a price if you make them take it out. Somebody's going to sue you. If he had 10, and now he only has nine, the difference between a market-rate house and an affordable house here is probably somewhere between $300,000 and $500,000. So if you add it on, he didn't lose all that money.
So just a little clarification for me a little bit as far as, if somebody builds 20 apartments and they have one low-income resident in that 20 apartment complex, does that include all 20?
For counting purposes?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
The 40B number is 25% of a rental project. So 100 rental units, 25 affordable, all 100 count. But unless they're low-income, which is 20% instead of 25%.
Now, is there something that we should be trying to protect ourselves as far as?
These units that you're going to create as affordable units in the flexible only will count individually, not the project, just the units. So 10% will allow you to tread water.
And sometimes it's, some people are happy to tread water. I prefer not to.
Well, I know you're over 10% in that.
But we're close.
And the census is coming up, so there's no reason why you can't bargain for more, but the requirement is 10%.
Well, we tried to bargain before in another project, and we got slammed.
Yeah.
And that's something that I wasn't really too happy about, you know? And we had no flexibility. So I was wondering if there's anything in there or something to protect ourselves to enforce that, because supposedly, we didn't have any enforcement power to ask for more.
Right. And I think that's the town center overlay district you're talking about.
Yes.
Yeah. But we left the affordable housing out of that because we wanted people to take advantage of it. Just to give you a local experience, the Schmood, Stoughton Center Mixed Juice Overlay District, has a 20% affordable housing requirement. They're not getting any takers, because it's so draconian. So they just cut it back to 10% at their last town meeting. So that's, you know, I'd rather have people take advantage of this and you tread water than have 20% and nobody does this, because this is a very nice tool for people to make a difference. So the point also is that if you're going to do something really nice, if you're going to give us 60% open space, well, you should get a bonus for that, so you can have some extra units for that. One of the ideas that Groton invented is a, it's a local, very simple transfer of development rights. If there's a star-studded parcel over there that everybody thinks is a beautiful piece of land, and you never want to see it develop, if I tie it up, put a preservation restriction on it, just anything to tie it up, I should be able to claim credit for that and get another unit in my flexible development. This is all in negotiation with the Planning Board. It's all in negotiation. The one overlay district that we got rid of is the Village Housing Overlay District, and it was not a true overlay district, it was really just a special permit. So you see that at section 8.2. I didn't change the rules, I just changed the format of the bylaw. I took it from being a district and made it into a special permit. Other than that, it stays the same. And I believe that the Village Housing District is your district now in which you're looking for age-restricted housing, 55 and older. That didn't change.
Not completely. There's some over 55 in that room.
Yeah.
But not completely.
Oh, okay. Well, I know that there's some.
Just the biggest building.
Yeah.
Dan, any recommendations on section 8?
No, no, I've gone through them.
To finish it off, there's a section on family support living space, which is your accessory apartment or in-law apartment. I didn't change it, just renumbered it. And then there's a section called multifamily dwellings, which I don't like, but I renumbered it and put it in. I don't think it serves you much use at this point, and if somebody moved to delete section 8.4 on the floor of town meeting because you don't need it anymore, it wouldn't make me unhappy at all. But I left it in for now.
Any questions? Over 55.
Yep.
Jim, for this, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but just for the sonographer, name and address, just so that we have it on the record for the sonographer. Thanks, Jim.
Only good as long as baby boomers are around. The next generation, because there's an over 55 in every town. So 20 years from now, we no longer need these over 55 boomers. What do you do with them?
Well, there's 82 million baby boomers.
You're looking at one.
I am too.
I'm 66, and I'm 51, born 1951. The baby boom goes to 1965, yeah, 64. So there's a lot of millions of people after you and me.
I understand that, but they eventually run out. The next generation, Generation X, there's less than half the people. You're not going to be able to fill these places with over 55 in 20 years.
Yeah, it is a land use restriction that rides with the property forever.
Right. So what happens? What do you do? You just tell them to tear it down, or we can make a quarter lot?
I think tear it down is probably the more likely answer. And the housing may not even, you know, it may be.
You won't match that one, but I'm saying, you know.
I think.
Everybody says this is a great over 55, but you're just not going to be able to fill them in 20 years.
I don't disagree, and I think you're probably tearing it down. As long as those buildings stay up, they're going to have that restriction on them. So unless you can fill it, I think it comes down.
I've never seen anybody take into consideration what you do after, and it's not that far from, really, I know it goes up to age 64, but it's still, the farther away you get from the early 50s, the less and less people are out, even though they can sit in baby boomers, less.
No, I have a brother in that age range, and I don't consider him to be a baby boomer, technically he is.
Yeah, my son, my oldest son is considered a baby boomer, and, you know, he went to the same high school that I went to, and when I graduated, there were 400 kids in my class, and he graduated, there were 200. So he's still considered a baby boomer.
I think it's a good question. I think the building probably comes down at that point. And, you know, if the restriction is written properly in the special permit, it should say that it's a building for 55 and older, as long as it's a building, and then it doesn't tie up the land after that. And I did, this is a new section on senior housing. So senior housing is defined as independent living, assisted living, congregant care facilities, and long-term care facilities. Again, recognizing the aging of the population and different models for people who want to age in place and stay in the town perhaps that they grew up in. Independent living is generally some shared services, a kitchen, amenities, recreational pool, that kind of thing. Assisted living is a more licensed environment in which there's a disability typically involves. Long-term care is what we used to call a nursing home or a convalescent home, and a congregant care is all of the above. There are some facilities like Carlton Willard in Bedford where you can come in at one level and exit at the other, at the end of the process. Section 9 is special districts, so these are your overlay districts, if you will. I believe there are four. Flood plane, didn't change it. There is a medical marijuana overlay district. The only thing I added there was a map location, and it's what you had already agreed on. Town center overlay district, which was not changed, and the adult entertainment overlay district, which was not changed. And then lastly, section 10 is administration and enforcement. This is the job of the building commissioner, the Board of Appeals, and the Planning Board, and then the tools that they have. Special permit, site plan review. Site plan review has been tightened up a little bit. It used to start at 2,500 square feet for new construction. Now it starts at any construction. But the Planning Board can decide to use minor site plan approval, which will make the process easier and cheaper. Or they, some of these small land uses actually have big impacts. Think about a Starbucks or a drive-in window at a Dunkin' Donuts. In most cases, when I work with Dunkin' Donuts, I'm told 75% of their business comes in the window. So just adding something that minor can have a huge impact on traffic, parking, pedestrian safety, issues like that.
Mark, we change that 15% down to 0%.
Yeah.
Everything has to go.
Yes. Any multifamily govern, I'm sorry, non-residential, industrial, commercial.
Right. Zero.
Down to nothing. Right.
1,250.
Say what?
What happened to the 2,500?
I think we made that the threshold for minor site plan approval. Let me check.
Oh, it's 1,500.
Is it 1,500? Okay. Yep. And 10 parking spaces.
It would be better at zero.
For minor?
For site plan.
Well, applicability, if you look on the top of page 69, no building permit for new construction of any commercial, industrial, multifamily without site plan approval. So it is zero.
Okay.
Yep. And then if it's 1,500 or less, you might be able to sneak through the process with minor site plan approval, but if it's 1,500 or more, you're going whole hog.
Yeah.
And even then- And then, uh, if it's 1,500 or less, you're, you might be able to sneak through the process with minor site plan approval, but if it's 1,500 or more, you're going whole hog.
Yeah.
And, and even then, uh, the planning board might say that something 1,500 square feet or less, um, is, is still something they want to see major site plan approval for.
So when we talked about that at the last meeting, I don't want to confuse it, but I want to make sure I know what I'm saying. At the last meeting, you said, um, it was 2,500. We'll leave it at 15. That you're also talking about the reduction in time, it's like 45 days.
Yes. My site plan approval will normally be done in, I think I have 45 days here. 30 days.
30.
There are a couple of sections at the end of this that are very specific. Uh, section 10.7 is site plan review for Dover amendment uses, churches, schools, and childcare centers. And it's just a set of special rules for this. I, I was out, just last week, I was in the small town of Monterey out in the Berkshires. Uh, there's a religious camp coming in and they're going to have 350 campers in the summer. It's totally oriented towards their faith. And you know, they, they play by different rules. So this is a, a bylaw that would address that. And then 10.8 is about disability law. Uh, if there's a, particularly with the drug and alcohol epidemic that we have, uh, the governor wants to see more treatment facilities. I don't blame him. When you are dealing with people who are recovering drug and alcohol abusers, they're protected under federal disability statutes. And this devises a simple way where they come to the board of appeals and the board of appeals decides whether to give them the accommodation or not. For example, in some towns, uh, the number of unrelated people who can live together as a family is, is cut off at, say, six. If you're running a facility of this kind, that's a mighty small scale. You might need 12 people economically to make it work. So you would seek a reasonable accommodation from that definition and the board would consider whether or not that's appropriate. And that's a.
Like those recovered buildings for alcohol and drugs.
Yep.
Aren't they protected in the state that they can go anywhere?
Well, sometimes they, they may come in under the Dover amendment if they have a counseling component and they probably qualify, in my opinion. Uh, so they would be protected there statewide under state law. But if, but, but sometimes they don't have the counseling component. A sober house, for example, uh, might, might just offer a bed. So you want to, um, you want to deal with that, uh, outside the Dover amendment, uh, under this reasonable accommodation request.
We just had one and, um, we went through everything we could and we just can't stop. That was the opinion of the government state.
Yeah. Well, it's, I have a number of different experiences with different cities and towns over the years. There's, this is fraught with danger for communities who don't know the rules because once you make the mistake, it's a civil rights violation. So you want to be careful and you want to start it, start it right and, and finish it right, right from the get-go.
We talked the last meeting about, um, I'm sorry, Susan Wright, recent one, I'm 239, sorry, I forgot. Um, you said that, um, there was something about the board of health and we talked about whether or not they had testing and all that stuff and you said that was a board of health, but how does that kick in?
Well, the board of health can adopt, uh, rules and regulations under chapter 111 of the general laws. And they, they, it's only three people, two, two to one wins. So they, they can do that. Um, and if it's health related, I, I would put it moreover into their side of things.
But I mean, for like the rules, how do they know? I mean, is it written somewhere or?
The state department of public health may have model regulations for things like that, that you can reach out to the department of public health and get, um, examples from other communities. Uh, right, you know, with Google these days, when I first started doing this 35 years ago, it was, it was a treasure trove to find something good. You know, the, the American Planning Association would have publications that you could get. But with the internet now, I, I just finished a project for the city of Haverhill involving easements along the Merrimack River. And the model that I found was from Texas. It was great. And we're, there's, there's now 1,500 feet of boardwalk on the Merrimack River. So you, you, you can find whatever you want. Cape Cod Commission has a, a bank of things that are really worth looking at. Um, there, if, it'll pop up on Google. And then section 11 is definitions, and there are some additional definitions that we've added, um, but for the most part, the ones that you had already are, are still in place. So I would say that, um, the recodified bylaw is 80% what you had before and 20% new and different. Uh, most of it is just simply renumbered, replaced, made easier to use and read.
Organized.
Organized, um, table of contents. A big change was that we took 20 pages worth of warrant article boundary descriptions out of the bylaw and we made a map based upon those that now reflect, uh, the last time I think I saw a date on a map was 97. Uh, so we've, we've gone through all the warrant articles and we've got something modern now. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Over 55 as well as the town, town center, where we got on the bowling. Is that something that, um, we should make a, um, amendment to, to the article that's already written so that it's right? You know what I mean? Cause you said it's, it's forever because it's in there as like saying 55. Should we make the wording change or something to make it so it can be changed around later?
Let's look at that. So the village housing district is eight, two, and it starts on page. I, I'm looking at around page 38, 39. I want to find the old one too.
Can we have a new one coming on Main Street?
You do.
Yep. And then the town's building.
The town's there now. So I just don't want to go to town meeting, go on something we shouldn't.
Right. So right now it says all occupants of a dwelling unit within a VHD shall be 55 years old. That's what it says.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
What confused me initially is, um, is, is the term, uh, it falls off, it all falls under the special residential regulations, village housing development.
Right.
And we also have that village business district. So that confused me initially. I think the village housing development, I think in the old bylaws, might be actually defined as over 55 or as a different.
I'm looking at it. I'm reading it. All, I, I'm reading the old one. All occupants of a dwelling within a VHD shall be at least 55 years old. The applicant shall enforce this condition by deed restriction. Such deed restriction shall be approved as to form by the planning board. So that means that what you decided to do in a village housing district, now, I didn't change it, you'll notice that, um, what you decided to do was make all occupants 55 and older. That's not what the federal law says. The federal law says to age restrict something, 80% of the units have to have one occupant 55 and older. You can say all occupants have to be 55 and older. And I've been to court on that in a Sudbury case where they tried to change it and they were told by Judge Long in the land court that they could not. All occupants means all occupants. But these are the policy choices that you have to make. So the federal law says 80% of the units, one occupant, 55 and older, which means that if you have, you know, uh, if I remarry and, and find somebody in their twenties who.
And they have 16 kids.
Exactly.
So what's the ratio of them, it, it, under the federal law?
It's the minimum. See, the, this is an exception to the otherwise fair housing law that you can't discriminate against people because of family composition. But if you have an age restricted community, you can. And in order to qualify, one occupant of 80% of the units, not 100%, 80% has to be 55 and older.
So 20% of the units could be under.
Yes. And every unit could have people under 55 and older, as long as one of the residents is 55 and older.
It's interesting. I mean, is there, what do most do? Do they adopt the federal standard?
It seems like you give. A lot of, this is, this is, you're trying to prescribe for a developer what the developer should be trying to do for him or herself.
But, but will this, if, if we adopt this, does it?
Yeah.
Requires.
Yes.
It seems like the other way around. If you do the 820, they can still do their own, can, can they still do over 55 only?
Sure. But in the Sudbury case I had, the original developer went bankrupt and it was a foreclosure. It was, it was taken back by the bank. A new guy came along and he said, you know, I don't think I can make that work. So he went back, it was, he went back to the board of selectmen, which did the approval. And they, they said, okay, go to the federal standard. My client was a resident who didn't want to put up with teenagers in the swimming pool and he sued and he won because all means all. And that's not going to change.
So, so can I ask Jim, what is the business village district?
Well, the business village district is, you have one business village district down by.
Old English.
The old Eng, the old English, yeah. Well, VHD is only allowed in res one, two, and three.
So they're not the.
But that's not, that's residential.
Yeah.
It's just the term village district that we have, we have a business village district and we have a residential village district.
Okay. So they're not the same. Okay. But what about up the town, the, um, mixed use? Is that something that you, we need to change the words on so we don't?
Well, I can, I can say the, uh, the VHD, all occupants in a dwelling unit within a VHD shall be 55 and older, uh, for as long a period of time as the buildings are used for residential purposes. Does that make sense?
If you, if you think it does.
I do. I, I'll add that as a floor amendment and I'll have it typed up so that somebody can read it to the moderator at the town meeting.
It'll show up at the town meeting.
Excellent. I'm, you know, I, I, so I, I will do that.
Do we really want to lock, do we really want to lock up?
That the room's a 55 and older for everybody? Cause now we're, now we're locking ourselves in for the life of that building.
Well, as someone 55 or older.
Locking in for the life of the building.
Lock it in.
As someone 55 or older, I, I agree. When my neighbors in Concord started having more children, I wanted them to be required to get a special permit. I wanted a hearing.
That's good.
No. When you're 55 and older, you just get grouchy, that's all.
I'm just thinking development wise, 55 and older, case for our folder, in 20 years, baby boomers are out. You can't use that facility for anything else but for 55 and older. If we go by the federal law, you can have one 55 year old person in 80% and the rest of the place is still usable by the town without being shut down.
It's easier to rewrite, rewrite the bylaw.
I'd, I'd rather keep it strong now and fix it down the road.
Yeah. Because if you move into an over 55 place, it's because you want to be in an over 55 place.
Correct.
And you don't want 30 kids at Halloween running up and down the street. Oh, oh, you know, that's why you, and there are a lot of people that, that's what they want. They want to retire to a place where they have peace and quiet, not, you go to some of these places where they're, you know, where they have a pile of kids running back and forth and you're going to.
Don't forget, people live a lot longer nowadays and they're projected in the future to live a lot longer.
Yeah.
And if you have, if you have one bedroom units, how many people can you get in there?
If you bought a place thinking that that's the way you're going to live.
Jim, one second, just one second. Don't mean to the line drop any, I like this conversation.
But for the sonographer's case, please just say your name for, for her sake, okay? Just to make things easier. Sorry.
So what's the group decision here in terms of an amendment? I know, I'm going to add the language for as long as the building is used for residential purposes, but do we want to go back to the minimum federal standard of 80% one occupant?
I, I see the, I see what you're saying. I mean, it, it, there's an attraction, there's another side to that point, is, is what you're saying. I mean, there are people that won't be attracted to the development.
Right.
Because of it, I hadn't thought of that. So I think.
You're not as old and grouchy as me.
But if you, but if you lock it up and there's one resident in that development that is of that age, you're not going to get that mixed, that use for residential change ever, ever.
Until the buildings are no longer used.
So if there's one person living in that development and the rest are unoccupied, it is going to stay 55 older and the rest of that residence is not collecting any evidence.
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll just, I'll keep the all.
Change the plan.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else anybody wants to suggest as an amendment? Because I'm going to write up a, a, a list of things for town meeting.
If somebody wants to build an assisted, do we have any regulation for assisted living?
Yes.
And the reason I bring that up is there was one guy walking, Jim Taggart, I'm not sure. There was one, one contractor who came, proposed to build was assisted living. And the more you talk to him, you found out what he meant by assisted living was putting a pull chain in the bathroom and you pulled the chain and the fire department comes. To me, that's not assisted living.
No, I think that's, I think that's in the purview of say the planning board.
So I mean, it will be assisted living, you will have things in place where.
You'd recognize.
Where I can run up and have somebody take care of me and I don't have to wait for the fire department to show up.
Assisted, assisted living is licensed now under chapter 19D by the state. So this is a very precise term.
They said, did that hear it when I talked about this?
So there is a, senior housing is allowed in res one, two, three, and four, which is what it was before. Uh, but we've, we've added assisted living, uh, congregant care, long-term care, and independent living as well. And that's section, um, eight point five on page 48. And I think these are good options for the town because these facilities typically pay more in taxes than they demand in services. So they, they will help with taxes.
Any further comments? Any comments from the board? Tim, any comments?
Just thoughts about, just sort of logistically for town meeting, you know, if the planning board member wants to speak, um, you know, I know, I know Mark would do most of the speaking. I assume you're, you're expecting questions such as, well, what's, you know, can you just highlight what's changing? And questions about what's changed with parking is something that I think of and I know we've talked about it over and over again, but.
Good.
Assuming, you know, Mark will be able to vault a bit, I just, I'm wondering how the planning board would represent it then.
I know that I won't be there because of work reasons, but, um.
It's always useful if the planning board or the administrator or the committee that was working on this before the planning board gives the audience an, an idea of just how hard you all worked to get this done.
I can do that. I don't mind doing that. I just, to me, it seems like somebody from the planning board should say, you know, we've actually got hearings and this is, this is.
There is, there is a statutory requirement that, um, if, if it's less than 20 days from the public hearing closure to the town meeting, the town meeting can't even consider this unless the planning board makes a recommendation. So they're definitely going to be making a recommendation.
Okay. So with that being said, um, you know, I, I think that we would make that recommendation.
Right.
Um, to support the changes. And we'll do that in, in a minute, I think.
Yeah. Close the public hearing first.
Right. Yeah. Um, so with that being said, you know, it would be nice if, if Dave or Vinnie or even Michelle, if you could possibly be at town meeting, but I know that Vinnie and Dave were part of that working group. Um, so it would be nice if, you know.
And we can, we can get together, some of you, whoever's designated first, and we can. And we can get together, if someone, whoever's the designated person, we can strategize. Tim, board and town administrator. Okay, we can discuss that later. So back on April 10th, the planning board had a...
We opened a hearing, and it was to discuss the changes here. And then we had continued that meeting on April, we continued that meeting. So at this point, I think April 10th, what we'd like to do right now is to close that public hearing that we opened on April 10th. So is there a motion to close the hearing that we had on April 10th?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor of closing that? And then on April 18th, we opened a public hearing, and it brought us, we continued it, and we continued it to May 1st. And I'd like to just make a motion to close the public hearing of April 18th, 2017.
So moved.
All in favor? Any animus? And also, at this point, being May 1st, 2017, with the town meeting just ahead of us, it would be nice to be able to support some of these bylaw changes. The redrafting basically of the town zoning bylaws. You know, we've had multiple hearings, and we've had two members of this planning board work very hard on making some changes here. And with Attorney Mark explaining everything on numerous times, I think it would be nice to have a vote from the planning board to whether they accept these changes. So if there's a motion to accept and to recommend to town meeting these changes. So by a vote, we could just vote on it right now. And I'll start off with saying, Paul, yes.
John, yes?
And that's a 4-0 vote that the planning board has recommended to the town meeting, the changes of these bylaws.
Is it your custom to write that up for the moderator?
Well, we'll...
No, we don't need to do that.
We can give it to the moderator. We can, when we sit down and strategize, we'll cover that.
Okay.
And the only reason, obviously, for the record, that it's not possibly, we had one person that was absent tonight that didn't vote, so... Any other comments on our meeting this evening at all? Is there a motion to close the meeting of May 1st, 2017? Second? All in favor? Great. I thank you.